Zoom meeting work session, February sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Our first item up for discussion is the Economic Development Committee recommendation. Did all the board members get a chance to read that and review it?
Yeah.
Yes, I did.
Okay. All right, I guess we'll go with Mr. Oxley. And why don't you explain what the Economic Development Committee is intending to do?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So it has been, it's pretty evident and clear that we've been on a mission of trying to figure out ways to revitalize the economic revenue sources in our township. And we at the Economic Development Committee have thought about different ways to do that. And we've had many different real estate brokers or real estate real estate agents, if you want to call them that, and other different folks from different parts of the county talk about how we want to, how we're perceived in Newtown. And then also, as you notice around the surrounding areas of different townships, we've found that there's a little more economic development going on, and we want to make sure we get some of that. But specifically, what types of industries and so forth. But first off, we wanted to see how we can be more marketable to particular companies. So we targeted trying to figure out ways to rezone and figure out ways to make it seem like we're more business friendly to invite new businesses in and also help the ones that are existing. And we thought about putting some recommendations and suggestions. And this is nothing final, but just some ideas of what we think might make sense that we can pass on to, with the blessing of the board, to the Planning Commission for their review and suggestions, because they're the ones that are going to basically go through the heavy lifting of getting this off the ground. And but, you know, the Economic Development Committee thought a lot of what we've found and seen is
Can I just interject? Can I just interject for a second? And maybe you mentioned this and I missed it, but we're only talking about the Commons right now. This is to be revive the Commons, because there's a lot of things on here like dry cleaners, barbers, convenience. We already have them in the township, but what you're talking is about bringing them to the Commons to make that more
We'd like to, we'd like to see retail.
Friendly or whatever.
Yes, we'd like to see some more retail options. We've heard that certain amenities that certain businesses are looking for don't exist in the Commons, which would be helpful for their employees and so forth. So we thought just adding in those particular items might be helpful just in keeping it open and broad, and then we can condense it down at some point based upon what the Planning Commission decides makes sense. And EDC looks forward to working in tandem with the Planning Commission to go through this project. But it's necessary in terms of our, you know, long-term financial picture. So I think this is something that we should definitely look at passing on to the Planning Commission in order for them to give us their thoughts as well.
Can I just note that the memorandum says the LI, OLI, and OR districts?
That's correct.
So that's not just the Business Commons, but it's the OR district as well. I guess the Business Commons is located in the light industrial section, correct?
Michelle, you want to elaborate on that?
Sorry, let me get my video. There we go. You're right, Mr. Mack. The OLI, LI, and OR is not, are in more areas than just in the Business Commons. But I think Mr. Oxley is trying to point out just the, that we're talking about the Business Commons, and these are the three zoning districts and their permitted uses that are allowed in the Business Commons.
Well, is this memorandum including the OR or not district?
It does.
I believe it does.
It does.
Okay, so it's not just limited to the Business Commons, but the Business Commons is where current businesses are currently, a lot of them located.
Are we assuming that the Business Commons has no OR? Why don't we ask the question to Michelle? What are the zoning districts that the Business Commons is composed of?
And do some of these overlap?
Do some of them overlap?
In other words, do they, do they, does the OR blend into the LI and so on?
The Business, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead, go ahead.
I was going to see if I could share my screen, because I have the zoning district up, Mike, if I'm allowed to.
Let's figure out what zoning districts are in the, in the Newtown Business Commons.
Okay, could you all see my screen?
No.
My chat.
I think, I think you have to, would Mike have?
I am. I think, I think he's allowing me to, there we go.
There you go.
Okay, so the Business Commons is the OLI, the LI. And you can say that it encompasses, you know, at least this part of the OR, everything down to the bypass. This is where Newtown Yardly Road connects down to the bypass right here.
The blue dotted line, the bypass, Michelle?
It is.
Okay, so there looks like a tiny strip of OR, the orange or peach color, on, on the right side, I'm sorry, the left side of the bypass. But, but, so I guess there is, there's very, very small amount of OR so that revisions to any ordinance could be to the LI and OLI. And those portions of the OR located west or north or whatever that direction is of the bypass, if that's something that we wanted to talk about. Or the revisions could only be to the LI and OLI and leave OR out of it, because, gosh, I don't even know if there's one whole parcel of land zoned OR that's located in the Business Commons.
All right, well, this parcel, I believe, if this is one parcel here.
Okay.
And it straddles the bypass.
Straddles the bypass.
Right. Right.
There's part of a lot on one side of the bypass?
Yes, on both sides, yes. I believe that was answered. But if I may, let's, let's back up. I don't know, Mr. Mack, what your, is your question just a general question? Are we talking about changes for all three districts? I think we're just talking, Mr. Oxley, please correct me if I'm wrong. We're just talking about the Business Commons and what's best for the Business Commons and whatever districts encompass the Business Commons.
That's correct.
I, I, I think that with, I think I understand what Mr. Mack's saying. We don't want to change things for the Business Commons and have it bleed over into anywhere else in the, in the townships.
Correct. I got you. I understand that. We could do that by different ways, such as an overlay zoning district and ordinances.
Michelle, before you even get to that, let's say, on both sides of the bypass, I'm looking at the one that borders, the OR district that borders Lindenhurst Road. Isn't that, isn't that the, what is it, what is the Caldwell Banker Building that sits on that property?
The Wood Greens back there.
Yeah.
Okay, so there is something there already.
This is Cricket Wood Green right in here.
Okay, so it's already commercially, there is commercial buildings there currently.
Office buildings, yeah.
Okay, on the other side, Lower Silver Lake Road, isn't that where the proposed convenience gas, gas station is supposed to go?
Yeah, in here, I believe.
And behind that, where it says Campus Drive, isn't that where LaSalle is? And plus, there's another office building that sits there?
Yes.
Okay, so I don't know, what, what kind of revisions would you make to those areas that are already developed and already considered commercial with commercial buildings? Whereas I, I don't, I don't know why that OR district was even included in this conversation. Or in the memo. Why wouldn't it just be the OLI and the LI?
Right.
Well, well, the memo was put together by the committee and it is up for discussion. So as we are the brain trust and you all, you all are much more familiar with the zoning here in Newtown than I would be. We are here just looking for input, but also to pass it on to the Planning Commission that will also have more input as well, Mr. Chairman.
But let's just consider if the, the Commons, which incorporates the OLI and the LI, the OR seems to be developed already. I don't know what changes you would bring, would you knock down a big building and put something, I mean, it's already there. And I think at one time, there was somebody that wanted to develop townhouses along that Campus Drive area, so there was going to be residential placed in that area.
Sure.
Talk about the one time, the hotel and a restaurant in that area. So I mean, I, what I'm saying is like, let's pinpoint what we intend to do. And I think the pinpoint should be the Commons. I don't know how anybody else would see that, but.
I agree with that, Phil. I don't want to see us extending all kinds of changes to the OR district since we had this, you know, thing with the combination gas station. We had to change ordinances just for that. And I don't know who owns that parcel of land that straddles the bypass, but I thought that was the church property over there on the other side. And, you know, so I would agree with you, Phil, basically.
I, I don't, yeah, I don't think we should even take into consideration the OR, if that's okay with the economic development. There, there's a lot of stuff that can be do, done in the OLI and the LI district. So there's, there's a lot of work that can be done there.
Well, let me just say this, that I'm not opposed to what you gentlemen are suggesting. What I will, what I will say is that the objective is to make it so that in the OR, if there is opportunity, that maybe, I don't think it's being utilized by any corporations right now, correct? And then that's, that's zone for office use, correct?
Yeah, which is being used by offices.
Which ones?
Have you driven through these districts?
I have, yes.
And you, you don't, in, in the OR, the ones on Lindenhurst, you haven't seen the office, what's it called, Cricket, Cricket?
Cricket Wood Green.
Cricket Wood Green, which sits back off of Lindenhurst Road. And also at the corner of Lindenhurst and the bypass sits the Caldwell Banker Building. If it's called Caldwell Banker Building anymore, it changes all the time. But that's another big building that, that has, is an office, office building. And on the other side, again, is LaSalle University.
That's being utilized?
And, well, I don't know, somebody bought it from what I understand. And there's also, what's it called, Forty-One University Drive, which is a four-story office building, which is be, which is being used. So there's not much that can be done in the OR as far as making these changes. But why are you throwing away the OLI and the LI to be adamant about the OR?
I'm sorry, I don't understand. Give me that again. What am I throwing away?
Your argument is to, that, to include the OR, which is already a developed area. But you have a lot of stuff in the OLI and the LI, which is the Business Commons or Business Park or whatever they call it nowadays.
I wasn't trying, I, I think you may have misunderstood. My objective here, I'm not disagreeing with, with what you're saying about the OR. What I'm, what I'm trying to say is that what we're, what we're proposing in OLI and LI is a way to bring businesses to Newtown, right? By revitalizing it in a way where we have those amenities. But on the OR side, yes, there's a, there's a Caldwell Banker bit, office space and whatever else you, I forget what you called it on the other side. But I don't, I don't know, Mr. Shankman, if you want to, who owns LaSalle University?
I'm not sure who owns it now, but up until last year, they have, they, they had classes going on there. And they also rent out the first floor for business meetings. We used to have our Newtown Business Commons meeting, monthly luncheons there. So I know it's an active, it's an active building. I'm not sure, Phil probably knows that.
Okay.
But, but my question is, if you have office space in that area between the Caldwell Banker Building and the whatever Cricket Wood Green or whatever heck it is.
Cricket Wood, ten years after, Phil.
Yeah. Why, why, what's wrong with trying to fill up that office space with professionals?
Absolutely, I agree with that.
Okay, so why, why are we trying to redefine what it is?
I don't thi, I think that we're on two different lengths with wavelength here, because I'm not saying to, I'm not saying that we needed to do that. I was saying that the OR would probably benefit from the revitalization of OLI, LI.
I think that, what I think, Phil, I think what he's looking for is additional uses that can, that would complement the existing uses and then expand for new uses.
But the, the, the new uses will be in the OLI, LI. People from the OR can cross over in there and use those new uses as
Absolutely.
That, that's, you know, redoing the OR seems to be, you know, I, I don't know, a waste of time, because there is stuff established there already.
Can I say, if I may, OR also includes the Holy Family property.
Yes.
And the, the, with the, the former
KVK property.
To the KVK property, that's a hundred and fifty-something acres that's basically undeveloped. So we could, for the future, let me finish. For future reference, I'm not saying to do it now, but those, that in fact is the most dynamic developable land that we possess. If we can figure out how to use it in the future.
That would be a great
Talking about it, that wouldn't be harmful, but I would say do it in a separate time.
Exactly. I mean, we all saw how long it took to sell the Lockheed Martin property. And, you know, it went, it went for a song. But I, I agree, I don't think we should attack that area until the time comes. You know, well, let's, let's, okay, David, go on about the OLI and the LI.
I was just gonna, the only thing I would, the last part I have is that the OLI and LI being revitalized in a way where we have those particular amenities and provide, as some people would say, a shot in the arm to that particular area would benefit us tremendously in a township. And we at the EDC have, have heard that tremendously for many different, we didn't just ask one commercial real estate broker or real estate agent. We, we, we surveyed many to get an understanding. You also have to remember, a lot of these corporate businesses are changing how they go about handling their daily business with their employees. You know, a lot of the, a lot of employees either work in New York or Philadelphia. And they're probably looking for different, and some of them, most of, some of them live in Newtown or surrounding Yardly or so forth. But we can draw, and we've, we've heard this, that Newtown is very desirable, especially in the life science, pharma, biotech space, that we can, we can provide, you know, a, a great deal of opportunity to companies that are looking to relocate, especially from Jersey as well. So I think we have a great, a great shot here, and I just want to make sure that we're on the same page. But I also want to make sure that, I know we talk about, hey, we can talk about this down the road, but it, it takes a while for things to get to this point. And we have to make sure that
Just to, just to interject, this is, you could ask Mr. Shankman, this has been a conversation for the last twenty years. And I
Well, I'm happy to bring it back up, Mr. Chairman.
You're correct, yeah, it should be brought back up, I agree with you.
Thank you.
But let's, there's, there's other things that are involved here, like not only the Planning Commission, but maybe the Bucks County Planning Commission should be involved. A legal should be involved there, there's a whole, a whole lot of thing. The, the concept is fantastic, I just think that we got to connect the dots and get it together. I mean, I'll, I'll, I mean, Mr. Sander, do you have any input on this?
This is a board policy decision where they want these proposed revisions to go. It sounds like we're, it's, it's, even if it's the Newtown Business Commons, it's ninety-nine percent LI and OLI. If the board doesn't want it extended to the OR, then I think we, if we're going to do changes, it's got to be by overlay, because some of the OR is in the Business Commons. So that, that's where I'm coming from as far as looking at the scope of where these revisions might occur. Now, I think the board, I, I, I think, I don't know if the board wants to go down each of these bulleted items on this memo now, or whether it wants to send this memo to the Planning Commission, asking the Planning Commission to review the bullet items limited to the LI and OLI and comment on whether they think these are good ideas or not good ideas, and if so, to expand on that recommendation. That's an idea that may be where the board wants to go today.
Well, we have Mr. Fidler here, and Alan, did you, did you take a look at this?
I appreciate being able to participate. The Planning Commission has had some general conversations on redevelopment or economic development. And I, I've sat in on some of the EDC meetings and I've, I've heard the comments. I think globally, the EDC was looking to generate as much potential new earned income tax revenue for the township, hence the inclusion of the OR district. I understand that the overlay principle that Michelle talked about could address the OLI and the LI. I've always thought that getting resources available to the Board of Supervisors through contracting with a planner, Bucks County Planning Commission, an economic development expert that can come up with the types of uses that maybe have been very successful in the neighboring areas so that we don't have to reinvent the wheel, so to speak. We've heard a lot about redevelopment and, you know, we've seen firsthand Doggy Days, the Pet Hotel, which is a redevelopment of an existing building. And I think when you look at the Commons area, a lot of revitalization may be in the form of modifications to existing buildings, which envelops land development plans, but the attraction would have to be economically, you know, sustainable. And I think that's where the EDC said some of the support service-based businesses might be a good inclusion. The point was made by a couple people that employees in their limited lunch period don't have time to go through the borough over to the commercial district to go through a drive-through at Starbucks, Wendy's, or Chick-fil-A. So having some services close by that can, you know, benefit residential neighbors, you know, in addition to the employees that are in the Commons. Will that drive an economic engine? I, I, I don't have the depth of knowledge to suppose that, you know, we can validate that without getting some professional opinions on what kind of accessory business uses stimulates interest in a commercial park. So that being said, we'll be glad to do whatever you direct us to. But, you know, I know that our recommendation would be, get us some professional advice from Lisa Wolf in Jeremy or Planning Commission in Bucks County, or, or Michelle, or, you know, someone else that the board feels could add valuable information for everybody to make a better decision.
So, so I, I guess, Michelle, what do you think the next step should be? Should we go to the Bucks County Planning Commission? I mean, they are, they are also doing the comprehensive plan, which could, you know, this could come in play as they're doing the comprehensive plan.
Not this time, but next time. I'm sorry, but.
Michelle.
I, I was gonna say that we discussed that and we thought that the comprehensive plan was too far down the road to bring this into the comprehensive plan right now. I think the next steps are if the board wants to go ahead with these revisions, as Dave said, is first take it to the Planning Commission. I agree one hundred percent with Alan. First step is to decide what uses should come into the Commons. And with the EDC Committee that Alan and I attended one of the meetings last year, we discussed some of those uses that should be brought in. But it's not only uses. We also have to talk about what other types of maybe amenities need to be there to bring businesses in. Do there have to be more of a walkability in the Commons? Should we try once again to get some sort of public transportation into the Commons? And those types of things have to be talked about when you talk about this sort of stuff for the Commons. But so next steps, I think, is maybe first going to our Planning Commission. And maybe you want to discuss getting a proposal from some experts that have done this in the past. Like I know of a few, one that just did a study down in Upper Dublin for their revamped industrial Commons.
Can we, at this session, just go through a few of these? So because there's very few opportunities, it seems, for supervisors to weigh in before this gets too far down the road. And I'd like to have several comments regarding some of these things. So we can do both, I think, talk about some of these things and then, you know, pass it on to the Planning Commission and however we see fit.
Well, it's a good idea, John, but I don't think this will be our last input on this thing. This, this is going to be, take some time. But I, I don't know if anybody wants to go bullet by bullet. I mean, Alan, do you want, or Michelle, do you want to go bullet by bullet?
Or direction that we get from the board, I think the better, our time would be spent with the Planning Commission.
Okay.
Well, I only have a few comments on a few of the bullet items, if I might, I could. I don't know if you want to go down the whole list, but
Before we get on there, can I say something before we go to the bullet items?
Yeah.
Thanks. I think it's a great idea, David. I think making it more attractive is awesome, a great idea. I do, however, want to make sure that we don't change the zoning in such a way where we'll enable it to be bulldozed in a mall go-in, a strip mall or something like that. I think we need to be careful of how to make those changes. And I think that needs some studying. So, yeah, I agree, the amenities are needed. What amenities, John, you're right, we got to figure that out. But I think we need to also make sure we need to protect the township from, you know, something like that, that, you know, make sure that we don't leave ourselves open to get abused.
Absolutely, and I agree with you, Kyle, on that. Um, and I think that we're going to obviously lean on, you know, our solicitors and our planners and engineers to make sure that we do the right thing to cover and protect our township. A lot of what I feel, the reason why we put this out there, just because we need a tremendous amount of revenue. And you all know what happened, you know, from a millage increase and how, you know, our residents weren't very happy with that. And we want to avoid having to do that in the future. And the only way we can do that is finding other ways of revenue. And I, I appreciate the board's input and your willingness to go line by line and all that good stuff. But let's remember, we want to protect our residents twofold, right? Not making it, make sure we're not bulldozed, as Mr. Davis said. We also want to protect our residents in terms of making sure that we don't have to find revenue, extra additional revenue down the road from them as well. So this is important.
Also not forget that we do, we do get revenue from developments that are of high value and high-income people living in those developments, which would probably maybe be more than some of the individuals that will be making some money in these, in this revamping. But I, I, I mean, we could go bullet by bullet. I, I think my opinion is to throw it to Michelle, maybe Leanna, and also the Planning Commission to go through this, because us going bullet by bullet right now, it, it, you know, it, it doesn't really mean anything until the professionals take a look at it first and, and go through that, if that's, you know.
I agree with that, Mr. Chairman.
We don't have to go bullet by bullet, but I do have a few comments that I would like to make regarding a few of the items.
So Had, but like I said, they may be revamped, because it's not a, it's not, it's not a final document.
Fine, I know it's not, and I'm just trying to give my opinion, move ahead and see what we can do.
Opinion, go ahead.
Well, one general question I have is I've talked to many businesses as well, and
John, how many, who are the businesses you're talking to? It'd be nice to know.
I can't give you names because they told me not to to tell you who they are. Well, one business, for example, is Pete, you're talking about people in offices in New York wanting to set, you know, set up, for example, satellite offices outside in New York. They're having problems with not Newtown, but with Pennsylvania versus New Jersey. So even if you made Newtown very likable and business-friendly, there are some issues that have that deal with the Pennsylvania law versus New Jersey law.
And. You know what the specifics of that are, John? Because Pennsylvania law is what what its municipalities operate under? And that's the municipality's planning code.
Well, it has to do with taxation and, you know, whether you, for example, if you have a home office that you want to locate in a, not in your home, but in a business district, if you're working in a, they, Pennsylvania can consider that a business that must be taxed. Other, and if you're just working at home, it's not considered a business, but.
Yeah, I I think it's, I think the taxation is based on the type of entity you are versus where you're located. There may be deductions that are applicable for having an office, certainly, you know, commuting, another business travel is involved with that. But I don't want to get too deep into it. I I'm not sure.
I don't want to get too deep into it either. I'm just.
Oh, that's valid.
As something to consider. One of the other things was this restriction on 1,000 feet signage from the bypass. And I, as I read this from when the NAC was trying to make signage for its escape, I think it was denied to have a signage that faced the bypass. And I think that's what they're talking about. My question would be, when the Economic Development Committee, are they thinking of just businesses for properties located along the bypass? Or are they talking about putting signage from the LI district, people, you know, businesses onto the bypass? Because, you know, I would not like to see, you know, lots of signage along the bypass.
Mr. Mack, we're not looking for billboards on the bypass. So it's more or less for some of those businesses that might be on the bypass.
Okay.
But as Mr. Chairman said, a lot of this stuff is probably going to get, you know, marked down. So, and that's okay. But, you know, Alan and the and the planning commission with Jerry are going to probably make the best recommendations to come back to us anyway. But thank you.
Well, I like.
I just, I'm sorry, I just want to add.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I just want to add one thing, Mr. Mack. There is a restriction from any sign facing the bypass to be within 1,000 feet. I don't know if you are aware of that.
Well, yeah.
Yes.
They want to.
It's in this memo, yeah.
No, no, I know it's in the memo. I didn't, I was a little confused.
Well, that that change would affect a lot of, a lot of things, in my opinion. Again, let's talk about the gas station convenience store usage.
Right.
There's been, there's been a request for having signage on the bypass. If we were to, if we were to release this 1,000 feet of the bypass, do you want a Wawa sign or a sheet sign or a Turkey Hill sign right on the bypass? I think, again, that's something that would be looked at by the planning commission and the planner and our engineer. But I mean, there aren't that many businesses on the bypass. Let's be realistic here. There aren't that many. So are we talking about directional signs to let people know what's in the bypass? Now, that could be, Michelle, would that be different? Would that, or i- if if there were directional, like, you know, those little signs that say, Wendy's here or something like that, you know, and they have the arrows. Can they be put on the bypass? Or would that be considered signage within 1,000 feet?
It it would, I'd have to find the ordinance, but I believe that would mean that it, that ordinance has no signage can be visible within 1,000 feet of the bypass.
All right, well, it says any sign that faces onto the bypass cannot be located within 1,000 feet of the bypass. I believe that's the exact language.
We have a few monument signs that.
Well, there's the Remax sign, the Remax sign at, across from the NAC, across Penn Trail from the NAC, that's certainly a sign. The the sign on the side of the NAC that says Newtown Racket Ball, Newtown Racket and Athletic Club, or whatever the original name was, is still there. I think that was a pre-existing, non-conforming sign that faces onto the bypass.
Well, the bypass was never, wasn't even there at that time.
Right, right, correct. So, I mean, I don't know what other signs there are that that are located within 1,000 feet of the bypass that face, or faced onto the bypass.
There's the Homewood Suites one that gets you into the Commons. That was allowed specifically by the Board of Supervisors. It was part of the approval for the town.
Monument sign, isn't it, Michelle?
Right, yes, it is.
We're also talking about allowing higher number of floors. I don't want somebody deciding to put in a five-story building, a giant neon sign on it says Merrill Lynch.
That's the, that's a, that's a major construction being done to the building.
I'm just saying.
What I liked is Phil's suggestion a long time ago, instead of restaurants, I like the idea of food trucks in the business Commons area.
Well, I I think the brewery is very successful with the, they have, they have trucks come in there. I I think whether they open Thursday, Saturday, Sunday. They have food trucks come in, I think it's a great idea.
And, you know, the reason I'm thinking that is that we, I know my son works in the business Commons. He doesn't get an hour off for lunch. He gets a half an hour. Restaurant's not going to do him much good because he doesn't have time to go at a sit-down restaurant. There's going to be a Wawa, he can go to the Wawa. He can go to Francesco's, you know, and he can go to other places that offer a takeout, for example. So restaurants versus takeout, you know, I don't think having restaurants in the LIOR, not the OR, I'm LI, whatever the other district is. OLI, I mean, you know, we've had a lot of complaints about so many restaurants. We have great restaurants in Newtown already. And if workers need to use restaurants, they're going to use them for like dinner. That's fine, they can stay after work and and take part in all the restaurants that we currently have in Newtown. It's not going to affect their schedule at all. So the idea of allowing, you know, those kinds of restaurants in the LIOR, LIOR, LI district is something, you know, I'm not completely in favor of, although I live very close and I would love to go to a restaurant there. But, you know, I can go a few feet more into the center of town.
So a lot of what comment, the comments were made is that these companies also look for that for their employees. And I think close proximity is something that they also enjoy for that reason. And however we have to do it in order to attract businesses, I'm open to looking at it, but we have to be open. We can't just be shut off before we even get a, get a true recommendation of what their actual, well, actually could be. So that's where we need to be more open.
We're not shutting off anything. I'm open to other ideas. I'm just telling you.
You just said you didn't like it.
I'm not, I didn't say I didn't like all the ideas that are in the memo. Just don't put words into my mouth.
No, no, I'm talking about the, you just said the restaurants, John. I don't like the restaurants there.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
I don't like the restaurant idea, that doesn't.
So I'm just sharing with you that we just should be open about it, that's all. You know, you know what, this is, no, 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 stop, 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 stop.
Hold on a second, wait a minute. There's nothing to say, maybe there could be, well, we have Frances, Francesco's, Francisco's, whatever it's called. There's nothing to say there can't be another one or two restaurants. But there also, we're not, we're not shutting off food trucks, which I think are advantageous for people at lunchtime if they're put in different areas of of the Commons. Now, that would depend on the people that own the parking lots. And my opinion is, if you're, if you want your, your workers to get a convenient, quick lunch, then why not have a food truck parked there for, I don't know, from 11 o'clock to 2 o'clock, 3 o'clock, where they could just walk, get their lunch? Now, like John said, afterwards, after, after work, if there's two or three restaurants in there that are serving, people can go there afterwards or into town. So I I agree with both of you, keeping the options open for everything, for restaurants and food trucks and those other options, except building on on the top of these buildings and closing other high block-story buildings, things like that.
Mr. Chairman, we don't have to make the the buildings, you know, skyscrapers and we're not trying to do that. But, you know, we could probably look at maybe raising them somewhat, not, not to the level that was recommended there.
Well, that's not your decision. The decision should be the person that owns that building.
But when they have to come back to us for.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So giving them some sort of.
And there is.
Herimeters around that.
There is a height restriction in Newtown, so there aren't, they're not going to be able. I believe 40 feet is.
Forty, I believe.
Yeah. So, I mean, my whole thing again, and I I said to you once before, David, is like, let's fill up the buildings with people. And then the options come later.
Sure.
Right now, we're we're putting the cart before the horse. We we don't have these, we have a lot of empty space there, which we can offer to businesses, like you said, from New Jersey or whatever, because we, we do have that convenience that's never been utilized, like how Ben Salem has billboards up and down the old Lincoln Highway going into Roosevelt Boulevard, say, come to, come to Ben Salem. We should have these signs also, is something that we should look into on 95, on each side of the river. And and we're, you know, we're in a, we're in a great location. But again, it was never presented the right way. That's why it took us so long, not us, but it took so long for, because we're not in the real estate business, you got to understand that. But it took so long to find someone to take over the Lockheed Martin Building, because it was never marketed properly. That's why we have to get, you know, other people involved in this.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
And I had a couple of things that haven't been mentioned yet that I just wanted to bring up. The sidewalks, if we're going to ask people to go back, you know, take a lunch break and go to a walkable restaurant, we need to come up with some conclusion about that. And I don't know if there's, I guess with with new land development, we've asked them to do sidewalks, but there's still a lot of parcels there that don't have sidewalks. And the other, maybe obscure, way back when consideration is Terry Drive expansion, extension. Is that dead? Or is PennDOT still have that on their list of things to do?
I don't, I don't think it ever died. I just don't think it was ever pursued. I mean, I don't, do you know the update on?
I don't, Michelle.
Or Alan, Alan?
I I don't have any other than the slip ramp idea was not embraced by PennDOT even initially. And I think, just my opinion, they threw some economic roadblocks to Newtown Township and Middletown Township for a necessary improvement to Woodburn Road intersection at the NAC. That was one of the things that they said it would have to go hand in hand with redevelopment and reconfiguration of that, so that double left turn lane going northbound on Woodburn Road can handle the volume of traffic at that time, going primarily through the township to the community college at certain times of the day and certain times of the year. But there was no champion from PennDOT or our area reps to really push PennDOT to say, this is an important component for continued in an internal egress for the workers and people that utilize the business common. So I don't know, Michelle, do you have any other spin more recent than?
That's my recollection also, that they wanted, they did not want any more access and and additional access onto the bypass.
Yep.
Okay, I just want to clarify that if we were, if we, if there was an inclination to want to pursue that, this would be the time to do it if we're talking about changes to the business commons. But certainly the sidewalk issue, I think, is still there.
Well, we had a, we had a plan for sidewalks was done years ago. I I don't know, Michelle, I don't know if you know where that plan is. But the only problem is we would have to take back some property to put these sidewalks in off of the business owners that are there currently.
For some of them, there was an original sidewalk plan done by a previous planner. We updated it several years ago. And I think Mike's trail, trail plan includes the business commons. So that's even a more up-to-date version of what should be in the business commons.
I talked to the, I talked to the president of the Business Commons Association about sidewalks. And, yeah, he indicated that that would have to be, each property owner would have to build it. And it cost a lot of money and they probably wouldn't do it. So we would have to find money to help pay for that. I don't know how that would work.
Well, that's exactly how it works. If the township wants to pursue it, then you could look into getting grants to do trails in the, or trails or sidewalks in the business campus. Otherwise, it comes out of your general fund if you want to pursue it. Or you need to, these developers come in for additions or changes in use and require them to put in a sidewalk at that time.
I know there's a roadway there called Walk Something and there's no sidewalk.
Walker Lane.
Walker.
And you can't walk on it. And I I heard from residents across the Newtown Yarley Road, they would love to walk around in there because there are amenities, like little, the schools for children and things like that, that they would like to walk in and even walk to the brewery. You could walk a certain distance to the brewery, but then you have to start walking on, in the street to get there. So that would really be a nice amenity, I think.
Sidewalks are always a plus.
Other than that, I can put my comments in writing, if that would be helpful, and send it to Economic Development Committee or or others. The only other thing I would say would be, I, there's a bullet here about consider an overlay district for multifamily housing. And I'm, I'm not sure what I feel about that. In fact, I think, think know about that.
Talk for a second, a couple of seconds about that. I I I think that you, and this is something, Alan, that we could discuss in the planning commission, at the planning commission. I don't think you really want to look into single-family dwellings or maybe townhouse dwellings, because they take up a lot of room. You need certain setbacks, parking and and things of the like, open space areas when you do developments like that. Whereas if maybe you're doing a redevelopment of an existing building, and we all know that there's many buildings down there that are vacant right now, but maybe if you want to look in, look into multifamily dwellings and redevelop those buildings, maybe for apartments, that might be something you want to look into to have a residential use in the Commons.
Yeah, that that's something we're missing here in the township is an apartment. I'll call it apartment complex, but nothing more than three, three stories from, but that's something, again, that that I think would benefit this township, because it would bring maybe younger professionals that that, let's, I mean, let's be realistic, don't have money to buy a house in Newtown, but want to live in Newtown. And then it also gives the older couples that want to downsize a place to live, that want to stay in Newtown, but don't want to move out of the area. I think that, yeah, redeveloping one of those buildings into like an apartment building or condos or something like that would be great. We have the existing buildings there, there's a few of them sitting empty now. I think right on the corner of Pheasant Run, there used to be an insurance company that occupied a three-story building and it's just sitting there doing nothing right now. I mean, the, these are things that I think that can be put out there to the commercial real estate agents, the, the commercial real estate brokers and so on, that these are, these are places that are available in Newtown, right there in the Commons. But these are, these are places that are available in Newtown, right there in the commons. Kyle, did uh, did you have anything to want to say right now or?
No, I have nothing else to add. Thanks.
Okay, um.
Well, one, one comment I I remember hearing at the EDC was from a a real estate, you know, broker in. In the commons, and she said that the rehab and vital revitalization of existing buildings into. Rentable apartments would be a considerable investment and with that would come. A significant monthly rental cost and, you know, if the economic engine is to try and attract young professionals. Or people that are working or retiring, um, the retirement segment may be able to afford an expensive apartment, but. This person indicated that they did not seem to think that those apartments could rent for less than the going. Rate that is being collected at the uh promenade over on uh. Sycamore Street, so and and they're in the twenty-two to twenty-seven hundred dollars a month range, so.
It's location. I mean, they're in a different location. I mean, you're sitting there in in the commons. I mean, you're not in the center of town. As opposed to the promenade where you're right in the center of town and and walkable to everywhere. I I I I don't know. I I just think that um, I don't know, maybe a smart developer could could make it work.
Sure, again, that was just one opinion of one, from one professional and, you know, they may have an agenda completely different than. What the township might be.
Sounds like we're open to possibilities though, which is a positive.
A lot of possibilities, just needs a little bit more studying.
Sure.
I mean, that that's, I guess, we're we're in the studying stage right now. And um having the Planning Commission Planner Engineer um all putting their heads together. That'd be a three-headed monster, but um, you know, I'm sure they could uh cast things out. And I guess we should get the uh Bucks County Planning Commission involved also. Does anyone know if um, this is a jointure issue by any chance or?
Probably. Well, if you're, if you're, go to amend the zoning ordinance at some point with uses with uh sign. Uh, issues, uh, that's certainly going to involve the jointure, although if this is um restricted to Newtown. Zoning district, zoning districts that are located in Newtown only, chances are good we will get deference from the other two. Uh municipalities, but yeah, um, any zoning ordinance amendments are gonna have to go through the jointure.
The LI and the OLI are only in Newtown.
Yeah, which which makes me optimistic that if the board wants to move forward, that it will be, it'll it'll ultimately get through. I don't see anybody holding it up. But it will still have to go through that process.
Okay. All right, so we got some uh, some work ahead of us. Anyone else have any questions? I see Matt Peters, you, your Economic Development Committee, you have anything to add or anything you want to say?
Not, not much to add right now, just appreciative of being on the call and being able to to uh, you know. Uh, sit here and and listen to the discussion and it's a very exciting topic, even though it might seem kind of dry for me, so uh. Yeah, that's, I I don't have anything else to add as far as right now. Um, uh, yeah, thank you though.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. So I guess, uh, does every, the, does everyone have direction? Michelle, Alan, Leanna? I guess Dave working somehow behind the scenes. We're all, we're all clear on what uh, where we're going forward here?
Well, I, just to conclude, is, based on the comments that have been made by the board today, is the Planning Commission ready to? Take a look at this?
Alan?
We'll, we'll do whatever is, you know, requested. Um, the more specific, you know, information. What we heard today is a good start. Um, if. If we can get a synopsis of of what the recommendation would be so that the Planning Commission could, you know. Go through it, much like you were, you know, suggesting to do here today with the bullet points. Um, you know. We know we're talking about not including the OR district. We're not talking about um sign ordinance specifically. But uh amenity seem to be a topic, uh building height. And the uses uh that may be compatible for uh Newtown, you know, business commons, so. You know, those, those three areas and then, you know, whatever detail that you're suggesting we come back to you with is, you know. It'll take some time to do the best we can with it.
It was mentioned that the Bucks County Planning Commission might get involved somehow. Is is that, how does that work?
We'd have to pay him probably to, and give him a scope, a study of what we wanted from them and. I just thought that quite possibly they might have the resources to know what has worked in other parts of the county. Uh, in similar, you know, revitalization efforts and they might even have some experts that could. Come in and make a presentation to the Planning Commission or the Board at some time.
I was wondering if there was a grant money available. They've helped uh get some grant money for the comprehensive plan. And considering that the impact that the COVID nineteen has had on businesses and. Maybe federal and state money might be available for uh actually paying somebody like the Bucks County. Planning Commission to help uh research this and figure out what are the best uh. Uh amenities and means by which we can achieve the end we want to achieve.
Let me add that, that. The, i- if there is a zoning ordinance amendment drafted and circulated in the jointure, it will go to the Bucks County Planning Commission. For the Bucks County Planning Commission's review and due course. You usually don't call in. The Bucks County Planning Commission to do special consultant work unless you've got a really big project. Like the comprehensive plan. Now, if we're talking about a complete rezoning of the LI, OLI. And maybe OR uh districts and completely rewriting those provisions, maybe that. Would be something that we would ask the Bucks County Planning Commission to consult with us on, but I think these, I think that the memo is more. Focused on individual, as we noted, bullet points that can be part of an amendment that the. BCPC will review, but not necessarily consult with us on the drafting of.
Oh, I, although I really hate to do this, I disagree with you a little bit, Dave. Um, the Bucks County Planning Commission does take on those big projects, but they also have especially uh for Newtown Township. Looked at smaller projects like a bunch of years ago, they looked at the TC District. And looked at the different uh dimensional requirements and uses for that, so I think that they can. Or and may be able to help us in this regard too.
Lynn Bush, Lynn Bush.
Yeah, I hear you, Michelle, and you may be absolutely right. That's a board decision. Um, if the board wants to bring them in, yes, you're gonna have to pay them for that.
Okay, moving right along. Well, Alice, Jerry, you have any input on this?
Um, I like what I'm hearing. I think that that we should have a logical plan for all of this, and I think that. With the direction of the board that you, we, we have to, you guys have to decide how big you want this to be. You want it to be just. Noodling around the edges based on some of the pointers in this memorandum? Or is there something bigger that maybe uh some kind of rezoning or overly districts, that's something we want to talk about? Which is bigger than this memorandum. And I think that may want to ask Michelle as in the first instance to. Do some, a research to come to the Planning Commission, if not the Board, with some ideas about what's being done. What are some ideas that are being done both in the county and beyond the county, in the Commonwealth on the East Coast, whatever? So that we have, we have an idea, because what we don't want to do, we don't want to do something twice. We're gonna make some changes, but let's make them work for the next twenty years. So we may want to have a bigger picture about what's possible.
Sounds good. Well, I foresee we'll have a, a few other uh work sessions.
Chairman, is this going, are we sending this over to the Planning Commission or does Plan Commission and EDC need to get together? Prior to that or?
Well, this is, well, again, realize this is not something that's gonna happen instantaneously. I think. Michelle, Leanna, Micah, um, anyone else would have to get together to discuss this first before, before it goes to anywhere. But yeah, it will go to the Planning Commission, absolutely. Uh, but but there's, there's other things in between that, that I think should have to be hashed out. Before it gets to the Planning Commission. Okay, fair enough, Alan?
That's fine. That, that would help our marching orders for sure.
Okay. Okay. Just moving right along, we have next the Newtown Borough Fire Service Agreement. I guess I'll open this up first to Chief Forsythe, if he wants to. Some input on this topic. Chief?
Uh, I appreciate being here today. I have sent several emails to the Borough. Every month it pops up on my screen and I send another email. Uh, to the best of my knowledge, there are a couple of meetings that are scheduled. And I think Mr. Fisher would have more input on that than I do. Um, so as far as I know right now, there's progress being made, but it's a slow process.
Okay, Dennis, you have any?
A little bit to add, yes. Uh, the Emergency Services Department and and. Township uh did, did have a meeting with the uh Borough. Uh, what, what you have in front of you in your packet today is one of the results of um. The meeting that that took place. Uh, I think uh Mr. Sanders wrote this up, the inter. Intermunicipal Cooperative Agreement for Fire Services.
Do we all have that? I, I, do we have a?
There's a work session. I think Mike has sent it out.
Got you.
So I, I think this was sent to the Borough at, end of last year. So they, they've had it, uh, they. Some questions, naturally, they had some questions about it and about how um. The fire services are funded in in the township. So they asked us for some additional questions. They reached out, uh, finally reached out to Chief Forsythe. Uh, and we do have a meeting coming up on Wednesday, on Thursday morning.
Can I ask you a question? This issue has been going on for two years. Last conversations we had. Uh, again, with people from the Borough was probably back in September of last year. Which we were promised they would get back to us before the end of the year. Now, I don't, I don't know about you, but when I'm getting something for free, the longer I drag it out. What do I care? I'm still getting it for free. What is going to be done at this meeting coming up? Because it just seems that they keep sending frivolous questions to us. And the whole thing is we're still supplying them with our taxpayer firefighters. To go and help them, which we're not gonna deny that, but for no retribution. We're not getting anything in return. What are they, why are they stalling? Is there, is there something we have to do? Should we be sending them a monthly bill? I mean, every time we make a call, should we be sending them a bill for the call? A- a- again, I don't understand the, what was it uh a couple of weekends ago or last weekend? They didn't even have enough volunteers to cover. And we had the, we had the, to send our guys in to make sure the Borough was covered. So they're not even holding that end up. Now.
Going into this meeting on, on Thursday, I wanted to get a sense, you know, I think it's good that we get a sense of the board of uh. How, how we want us to proceed. So yeah, you're, you're speaking right to it, Phil.
I, I just think the sense of the board has been for over two years. We've been kind of patient. We've been holding up our end. Uh, they haven't done anything in return. And I can name the same people that come to the meeting and keep pushing it off and pushing it off. It, it, it's getting to uh, you know, it's getting kind of ridiculous in a manner. Uh, what can we get free from the Borough? What, what can they give us for free? That costs hundreds of thousands of dollars. Anything? No, probably not.
Phil, you asked a good question. Can we, can we build them? Do we need an agreement with them to build them for services?
I say we just bill them anyway. I mean, I, I. Our services are worth money. You know, our personnel is worth money. Not only that, but we're taking our people out of the township, of which, hey, listen. We just raised taxes. How would this look to the people of this township that their taxpayer money is going for the Borough? To get free, free firefighters from the township.
So what would a bill look like? Would it be like a monthly bill that had here the services we provided to Newtown Borough in the month of? Uh, January twenty twenty-one and we uh estimate the cost for those services to be X and. This is what you owe us. Now, when they refuse to pay, it becomes what? A court matter and then that'll accelerate.
Yeah, I think, I think that pushes, that that pushes them to either. Come to our agreement of what we're asking or start paying the bill. Now, as far as how much the bill would pay, I didn't think that would have to be determined through accounting and with, with the Chief Forsythe determining the time that is. Spent there, how many calls, blah, blah, blah. So I mean, that, that's something that, you know, you just can't say off the top of our heads here. But, yeah, I, I, I think something has to be done. We've, we've, we've been patient. Again, they keep pushing it off. They keep getting free services from us. So yeah, if I was them, I'd do the same thing. Keep pushing it. Oh, yeah, we'll get back to you in six months. Uh, six months go by, i- i- it's the old, the, the old joke, I don't know, that the doctor says you got six months to live. The guy doesn't pay his bill, he says, oh, you got another six months to live. So I mean, that, that's what's happening here. I mean, so.
But the other question I had, do they provide services to people in Newtown Township when they do provide services?
They're supposed, well, under the Volunteer Fire Department, they are supposed to, from the time, Micah, what time periods are they supposed to be?
Well, there, there's, you got to keep in mind that there's three, there's three different participants. So, so there's the township. And we have our paid guys. There's the Borough. A- as an entity, and then there's the Newtown Fire Association. So the Newtown Fire Association provides coverage for the township. During uh non-business hours, meaning six PM to six AM overnight and on, on weekends and holidays. So is the Borough providing any, 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 anything to the township? The answer is no.
We, we pay the fire association too, so that's not.
We have an agreement with them.
The Borough pays the fire association too.
Uh, a smaller, a much smaller amount.
Well, obviously, obviously, but, but I didn't want it, I didn't want everybody to think that they were skating by on that also.
And I wasn't gonna let, I was gonna mention it. Thanks, Dave.
Okay, so we pay them about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year, basically, right, Micah?
Plus the relief aid money.
Right, so, okay, they shouldn't bill us and our bill still is outstanding. Basically. So. We can't have a billing co- a billing war, in other words. They can't bill us for services because we already paid for it.
Well, that's the Newtown, the Newtown Fire, the firefighters are separate from the Borough.
The NFA, Newtown Fire Association, we have an agreement with them.
That's not.
That's not the Borough.
Yeah, the Borough is different. The Borough is the governing, governing body.
Our services from six AM to six PM on the, on the weekdays. And they don't, at this point, they're not contributing to that. They, they have indicated, I, I mean, I've heard them say. Probably even have it in an email that they're willing to pay. It's, but it's, it's kind of is, maybe like what Phil says. You're getting something free, drag it out as long as you can.
All right, so what, you have a meeting Wednesday?
Uh, Thursday.
Thursday, okay.
Why don't, why don't we report back from that and we'll take action and be.
Yeah, let's uh, let's see what um, you know, brainstorm they come up with this time.
Chairman, do you think it's gonna be the same thing?
Well, it's, it hasn't changed.
Right, so.
The whole thing is unless we, we are the assertive ones here.
Yeah.
And and put our foot down and, you know, actually, we're getting what we deserve. We're not. We're not like bilking them out of anything. This is something that, again, when we spoke to them back in September. It was even before budget time and the reason we. And the reason we did that is because we figured this is something they could but put into their budget for next year is a payment and we were even willing to defer how much they had to pay us. So a- a- and I don't know if, uh, this was all in the agreement, but, you know, they were the ones that were adamant that, oh, we'll schedule a meeting before the, before the beginning of the new year. And that just, that just never happened.
What, what, what do you think it might make sense that we prepare a bill just in case that Dennis can, Mr. Fisher can show at this meeting?
Well, I guess we could, we could do a mock.
If, yeah, if it, if it, if it doesn't go the way we feel as though like they are willing to come to the table with some sort of resolution, which as you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, it seems like they're gonna continue to drag it out as long as they can. So maybe there should be some sense of, hey, well, all right, well, until we come to an agreement, this is your bill for last month.
Again, that would be something that I guess between Micah and Glenn, uh, they would have to figure out what the, uh, what that bill will be. But yeah, I, I mean, I have no problem. Dennis can bring a mock up, a sample, here's what the bill would be.
Look like, yeah.
But, but let's make sure the bill would equate to what we want to get.
Absolutely. Oh, yeah.
So, all right, so you, Dennis, you and John go into that meeting? John, you go into that meeting? Okay.
Yes, sir. Glenn, John and I.
All right, good. Don't be wishy-washing now, guys.
So we're not authorized to actually present a bill to them just to, if it comes up, if we're not satisfied somehow, to show them what we're thinking about in terms of a mock bill or something like that? Is that what you're saying?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I, or we could have, after you come back with the information, uh, we could have uh Micah send them a mock bill and saying this is, this is basically what uh John and Dennis were talking about. I, I, I just think that uh we, we have to, we have to get something. You know, I, I, I think we were looking for a figure of three hundred thousand dollars, uh, which isn't an unfair figure for, for, again, they could split it quarterly and pay us quarterly, whatever. But right now, again, our guys are going out there. We're paying them. The township is paying our guys to go out there, cover the, cover the borough uh and not getting compensated at all, so.
I understand, but they've already seen this uh, this uh agreement here, which, you know, it's, it's just an idea, I guess, at this point. But um, you know, I don't want to upset any apple cart at this meeting, but um, so I just want to meet and Dennis to know how we need to proceed on this. Uh, Dennis, you have any suggestions?
Also negotiate in, in, in public, but so.
Well, I don't, I don't think there should be any negotiation going on there because you don't want to, you don't want your words to be held against you. I, I, I know, uh, uh, Chief, how many calls do we make on an average a month or annually to the borough?
Our call volume is approximately fourteen percent of our call volume is in the borough. Now, that's, that's combined services between emergency services and the fire association.
But that's per month?
Well, that's annually.
Yeah, I, I've seen, I've seen um percentages as low as twelve and as high as eighteen. So an average of fifteen percent of the calls are the, of the, of the borough.
But the, but our, our guys still have to answer the calls. That, that's the whole thing.
Oh, yeah.
What, one person tried to tell me base it on population. Now, that was, that was a, boy, boy, what a trick that was. I said, I don't care if you had a population of one, if that person calls the fire department fifteen times a day, you should be charged for that. So, so don't, don't pull the population issue on us. So I, I don't know. I think we have to maybe if, if worst came to worst, assess how many times we were called into the borough and charge them accordingly. A thousand, two thousand uh dollars a pop, whatever. I, I.
Any invoice. Yes, sorry, Mr. Chairman. Any, any invoice would have to be structured off of our existing fee schedule. So we would have to generate from that, from false alarms and from, from time and material spent on a call.
Well, we can increase the fee schedule.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, well, it's.
The real fire's gotta be a little more expensive than a false alarm.
Get a cat out of a tree.
Phil, if I could ask the question of Jerry, um, would before any action could be taken regarding sending bills to the, to the borough for services, would that have to come from a, a formal motion in a public session and voted uh before it can carry any weight? I mean, no, you're sending a bill if they're gonna just ignore it, but if it's, you know, done through uh, you know, a motion from the Board of Supervisors and approved as in a formal meeting, does that carry any more weight?
I think, I think sending the bill is more of an administrative function at the direction of the board. If they don't pay, I think a- absolutely. Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, but a motion would be required to go after that money.
Yeah, and, and I'm gonna gently try to persuade the board to do everything it can to enter into an agreement so we have something in writing rather than just drawing up a bill and sending it to them, their objection to which will be, what are you basing this on? There's no writing, there's no, there's no contract here. Our argument would be that it's based on the fact that they're receiving services and not paying for them and getting a windfall and therefore we're entitled to uh payment based on that. But again, how do you quantify that? It, it's, it's, it's very muddled and it would really help if we got an, an agreement. Sending a bill, I agree with Micah, would be an administrative uh activity. It doesn't need board approval, but in order to file a suit against the borough, that would need board action.
Could I, could I tell you a story? I don't know if this is relevant, but it's funny. Uh, a friend of mine uh didn't move out of the way of a fire truck in New York City, but they got into an accident. He ended up in the hospital. They came to his hospital room and gave him a bill. They didn't have any agreement. Uh, they just said you.
Well, that's a, that's a, that's a personal injury uh issue or property damage issue. It's not a contractual issue. We're talking about billing them for services rendered. So it's a different theory of law, but I understand what you're saying.
Well, let's not give them a bill on Thursday. Take the information back in like, once we, we ascertain what the cost would be and I guess broken down by, you know, what our guys get paid per hour, how much gas is used to go, I mean, there's all kinds of things that could be tacked on to this particular bill. Then maybe Micah again could come up with a mock bill or, uh, you know, a sample or some like, a- a- and we could work it from there. And like, like I think, I think Alan is right. If we were to make the determination on start billing them, we would have to, we would have to vote on this at a public meeting and, and get that thing in here up, so. So that's, uh, you guys got your direction. Go in there, be killers, be barracudas and see what happens.
Thank you. I, I can have Adam, Dennis.
Go get him.
I know him too, uh.
All right, the next thing is uh, Micah, so I guess the refinancing or something like that?
Yeah, I just wanted to, to just get the boards, take the board's temperature on this and uh, I had circulated an email from uh PFM a few weeks ago about re- potentially refinancing the existing debt that the service ha- uh the township has. Um, we're set at a fixed rate of two point five one uh percent right now for the, for the payments for this building uh in the complex. So what they, what they had proposed is uh essentially that they could save the township approximately two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. If we were to restructure the eight, eight million dollar outstanding debt with no extension. So initially, the first step, which would obviously require board approval, is to uh, uh, an authorization to uh get PFM to solicit uh rate quotes uh from banks to finance this. So um, I was just sort of putting this on the agenda, if there's any discussion that I can speak to or uh, if we want to add this to the future agenda uh next week for, to authorize PFM to, to go collect some, some RFPs. I mean, i- if you get the RFPs and, and there's nothing that interests the board, um, then we can always just reject the, the proposals and move on.
Who do we have, who do we have our loan with now?
Um, the existing loan is with uh TD Bank.
Has TD Bank uh been approached with the, with our possibility of refinancing?
Uh, yeah, that's what PFM would be doing. There would be a purging uh TD Bank and a slew of other banks asking him for their best rate.
Now, this, this refinance will save us how many, how much money in the first?
They're, they're estimating if we get a rate of two point, I'm sorry, one point eight five, they're estimating it could be up to uh two hundred and eighty-five thousand. That doesn't include the uh issuance cost.
But that's over until twenty thirty-five, but in twenty twenty-one, we could save two hundred and fifty-five thousand nine hundred and seventy.
Yes, the example, the example that they sent over shows a, a, the way that the debt structured, the biggest savings would be in year one.
And it catches up, I mean.
And then it's out. Yeah.
Yeah.
It stretches out longer, right?
It's like getting a mortgage, your first month is free.
Amortization is, yeah. Yeah.
What, what's PFM's fee for doing this?
They, they're, they're fiduciary, so there's no, there's no fee except for the, the uh issuance cost. What are the ways?
Bank which is, right. Um, I, I don't know what that is.
So I don't, I, I don't know. That's what they would need to answer in the future. But as of right now, they would be just be gathering RFPs.
Yeah, I mean, when we, when I hear that we're, that we may be paying in some way, some, a third party to go to banks and ask them for their best rate or if they can beat a rate, I mean, we can do that.
Not for, not for, for this type of loan. They helped the township back in two thousand seventeen.
As a township, we can't send out RFPs and, and.
I mean, we can.
I mean.
I, I, that's why I asked about how much we're paying PFM to do this.
It's nothing upfront from what his email had, had said. Well, I mean, there, there's nothing, no one gets, there's nothing for free, right? Right. I'm, unless you're the borough and you get.
Oh, yeah, unless you.
But uh, uh, but uh, and you know, my, my inkling on this is that perhaps we just look at it, but I like the RFP option as well if we can, you know, because it saves us money. Um, but, well, I think we should just look at it a little bit more and not make a decision on it and just see what the options are. And then we can make something, we can make the best decision, have to see what's on the table.
People who know markets, is the market gonna change?
We knew that he'd be multimillionaire.
I'm sorry, Phil.
I agree with David. I think it's worth looking into.
Yeah, I agree. So let's put it on the agenda on their managers' report so we could, uh, we could officially vote on this.
Okay.
Okay.
I like that idea.
Okay, uh, public comment. Anybody have public comment out there? Okay, seeing none, any old business? John, I'll just ask you, any, any word from the uh school board?
I'm trying to arrange another meeting with them, perhaps uh next week. It's been a little uh tough getting all the cats together and but uh there were several inquiries I had. Uh, one uh was your uh inquiry about the uh budget and providing uh services to residents and I, I just noted in uh some uh news report, I saw that uh, that was one of the recommendations made by uh one of their committees to help improve their financial situation is to offer facilities but for a fee. So I just wanted to ask more about that and some other issues. If you have any, let me know. What else?
Anyone else with old business? Anyone with new business? Okay.
Yeah, we are going to uh just appointments on, at the next meeting.
Yeah, is everybody ready to do that? Uh, I mean, I think we only have a, a few appointments to make. Okay, well, I guess that's it. Uh, we're adjourned.
All right, see you, fellas.
All right.
Hey, everybody. Thanks, guys. See ya.